Ready for this? Okay, hey, welcome to the meeting for the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. We're happy to have you all here today, and we're going to start with the roll call, please. Adam Clerk.
Supervisor Boone.
Present.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Stevens.
Okay, if I can ask everybody to please rise. And we'll start with an invocation from, hey Doug, how are you? We'll start with an invocation from Doug Smith from Hope Point, Nazarene, and we'll follow. Sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, see, from Doug, and then we'll follow that up with a pledge of allegiance. If I could have Supervisor Stevens lead us in the pledge today, that would be great.
Let's pray. God, thank you for today. Thank you for this gathering. We pray for guidance and strength and wisdom for our leaders. We're blessed to be led so well. We want what's good for our city and for our county. So just instruct us today. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Doug, appreciate it. Supervisor Stevens?
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Everybody, please be seated, except the Board of Supervisors. Join me in the front, please.
Will Rick Bingham please join the Board at France to receive a proclamation recognizing December 2025 as Seasonal Depression Awareness Month?
I'm going to ask Supervisor Baines to go ahead and read this off for me today because I have cough or a little cold going on, so thank you.
Hold on. Yeah, no worries. All right. Seasonal Depression Awareness Month, December 2025. December is a seasonal depression awareness month and is observed to educate the public about seasonal depression, also known as seasonal affective disorder, SAD. Like other medical, like other mental health conditions, SAD does not discriminate and affect individuals of all ages. SAD is more than just the winter blues, but is a mood disorder experienced by approximately 5% of adults in the U.S. and typically occurs during the fall and winter months due to the decrease in daylight hours. Symptoms of SAD include fatigue, depression, and social withdrawals due to the biochemical imbalance in the brain. Safe and effective treatments for SAD exist, including light therapy, medications, spending time outdoors, and psychotherapy. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of December 2025 as Seasonal Depression Awareness Month in Sutter County and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Sutter County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you.
Rick, could you say a few words?
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the board and recognizing this, this, this condition and, and this season of the year. This is probably a good day to talk about this, where it's really gray and cold outside, and it's been foggy for a long time, right? But I just want to highlight one of the things that says in there, which is that, of course, treatment works. And like most other conditions in behavioral health, we know that therapy and medication can be very helpful. But interestingly, with seasonal affective disorder, also light therapy and vitamin D. So take your vitamin D if you're not getting outdoors enough. And thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, great, thank you. And now we'll move on to public comment. This is where members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any, any item appearing on the posted agenda. And is there any public comment?
Yes, we have two. The first is from Tina Hesson.
Okay, great. Hi Tina.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to effect their safety and happiness. New California State is a movement established by we the people who are following our founding documents to make change and institute new government. We have declared independence, established our own bicameral legislature, written our own constitution, delivered 190 grievances, 16 declarations of truth, 15 notices of default, 10 proclamations, conducted 95 field hearings, held 13 constitutional conventions, and conducted four hand-counted elections. Most importantly, New California State has officially requested that President Trump carry a bill to Congress for our statehood. Enter the Gallagher State Solution. The same failed politicians who facilitated and participated in the destruction of this state are now claiming that they are the legitimate solution. That sounds like a really great idea to me, not. It's a little too late, gentlemen. You had your chance to govern and you failed. We no longer consent. Mr. Gallagher is out of a job and looking for a new one. He's seeking a way to stay relevant and, most of all, a new way to fundraise. You had your chance to make a difference in this state, and you failed miserably. You have absolutely no business calling yourselves legitimate or a solution. Instead, may I suggest that you follow the New California State Movement? It is the legitimate state solution because it is a we the people movement following the Constitution.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next.
Our next speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, Norfolk City, 2020, Wilkirk Drive. Thank you, Mike Ziegemeyer, sir, my first service. Sarus Haskies versus the Honker Cheerleaders, River Valley Cheerleaders. Jeff Stevens, Pumpkin Farmhouse, I love this farmhouse, man, it's nice. And also say love. Dan Floor, the Darth Vader, Darth Vader versus Wonder Woman. Who will win? Carm Baines, the diversity guy, Carm Baines. Go, 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 Carm Baines, Carm Baines, go Carm Baines. And Jeff Boone, boom, boom, boom. And Sarah, Sarah Evert Rios, and the probation chief down there, and the Hampton guy over there, and, and Gina, Gina Stephanie, and Tina Hesson. Hesson sounds Asian a little bit, but it's German. Thank you, thank you to BW car driver, go BW driver. Thank you, our sheriff, Sheriff Scott Smartwood, future sheriff. Thank you, Sarah, Sarah, Sarah Evert Rios, HHS Director. Thank you, Carol Scott Hansen, 20 Palms Desert, 20 Palms, dude. And thank you, Cadet Deppy over there. And thank you, President Lawyer Bill William. And thank you, Professor Steve Smith. Five o'clock, I'm getting McDonald's, going to McDonald's food, hopefully. And thank you, and, and, and Neil, 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 Neil. And, and thank you, and, and Dr., Dr. Lou, too, Dr. Lou. Thank you, everybody, Dave, for your service. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any further comments, Madam Clerk? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial for which prior policy direction has been given to staff and that require only routine action by the board. The Chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total by one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. I would entertain a motion, yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance for the title for Agenda Item 7, please.
An Ordinance of the County of Sutter, amending the Sutter County Ordinance Code by amending Chapter 412 relating to industrial hemp cultivation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Waterworks District One Board of Directors meeting. I'll ask the clerk to please let the roll call stand. Again, under public comment, the members of the public will be allowed to address Waterworks District One Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? Okay, there being none, we'll move to appearance item number one.
Ratify an adjustment to the Waterworks District One Fiscal Year 2024-25 Adopted Budget, increasing appropriations by $12,289 and depreciation expense offset by the use of restricted fund balance for fiscal year end cleanup.
Is that going to be presented by Neil Hay? Okay. Good afternoon, Neil.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisor. So as the title explains, this is a cleanup measure from the previous budget for the Waterworks District that is being brought for your board, for your consideration and approval. So previously, when the Waterworks District Board approved the budget adjustment in the past, then for depreciation for utilities, it's the way that it was calculated depending on the book value. So the budget adjustment that's put before you is to address the amount, there's two amounts, $5,647 and another $6,642 for your consideration. And with this, it would allow for the closure of last year's, the 2425 budget for the Waterworks District. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry, thank you, Neil. Ask the clerk, first of all, are there any public comments on this matter? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
First by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Boone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? There being none, the motion carries. We'll move on now to any other business of the board. Okay, there being none, there's no closed session. We're going to now adjourn the Waterworks Board, number one, Board of Directors meeting and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. I'll ask the clerk to let the roll call stand for the Board of Supervisors, and we'll start with appearance items.
Receive a presentation on the number of individuals and families served through the Yuba Sutter Food Bank.
Got too fast than he thought, huh Maria?
Hello, thank you so much for having me today. I, I'm here to say thank you for your support of the Yuba Sutter Food Bank. As you know, we had an interesting couple of months with the government shutdown and also with the delay in SNAP benefits. And our governor pointed everyone to their local food banks, which we are, of course, happy to help. And Sutter County, they were instantly in contact with me and, hey, what can we do? How can we do this? How can we serve? Everybody rallied together and we made it through. It was a success. And we received support from community members and just an amazing, amazing amount of support from community members and local jurisdictions. And I'm here to say thank you for that, thank you for your partnership. And we wanted to kind of give you an update of what it looks like, what our numbers look like, so that you can see the amazing work that we're doing, how we're feeding your constituents, and what we're doing with your support. And I did want to say a special thank you to Supervisor Stevens and Supervisor Baines because they gave the food bank their Golden State Water donation. I believe it's gobble something or another, right? And that goes to food insecurity resources, and they, they provided that to the food bank. So I wanted to say a special thank you. Supervisor Baines served on our board for quite some time, and now we have Supervisor Stevens, and we're grateful to have your representation on our board and for your support. So without further ado, my amazing presentation. Is this, is this one? Okay, there we go. Okay, so these are our, our numbers. It's, these are the number of food touches, so the number of individuals who are receiving food from the community, from the, from the food bank and our community resources. So this could be through one of our partner agencies, pantries, or through a direct distribution from the food bank. So these, these are individuals, but it's important to note that they are not unduplicated. So these we would call, let's call them food touches. So from 2022 to 2023, we went from 152,000 to 272,000 food touches. That's a 79% increase in numbers served. Then from 2023 to 2024, we went up 55%, up to 422,000 food touches a year. And now we are on target to increase that over, over, over 11% from 24 to 25. So we are looking at about 35,000 to 40,000 food touches every month that we accomplish by the food bank directly and also through our 50-plus partner agencies. So we are feeding a lot of people, and this is Sutter and Yuba County together. With your support, we were able to do an emergency food distribution in response to the SNAP delays and the government shutdown. This took place on Saturday, November 8th. We were able to have it at the Kmart building. I have to say, I love the Kmart building. I love that parking lot, and I'm so glad that it's there. I wish it could be the food bank's. And I'll just leave that there. I'll just, I'll just park that there. So, you know, I mean, a girl can dream. So in that parking lot, so we, we served over 2,350 individuals representing 650 families in two hours. So the, the people were lining up at 4:30 in the morning for food. So I have a, a, a video that, that one of the gals in our office made, and so I wanted to show it to you because it's super cool. So you guys, you guys can put that on for me. It's really neat. We had a lot of people there that day, and it's, it's awesome to see great things happening in the parking lot of that building. And we just, we met a lot of needs. And in fact, the breakfast that you saw there was one of, was Tracy from Valco. She's one, Valco is one of our major supporters. And they felt so bad for the people that had showed up at 4:30 in the morning waiting for food, that they went and got their Blackstone and bought a bunch of food and cooked breakfast for everybody. It was just an amazing testimony of, of how we show up for our people. It was, it was a great day. So I wanted to share that with you and say thank you for your support in helping us make that happen. So another exciting thing is that the food bank, I am a member of the Community and Military Appreciation Committee called CMAC. It's a relatively new committee, and basically we're, we're boots on the ground that like to do, we raise money and help support the men and women at the Air Force Base. The food bank is very, we are big partners of the Air Force Base, and what we do is we provide food for those young airmen who are trying to make ends meet. It's referred to as a budget offset. So a lot of these young airmen are, they do, they struggle to make ends meet, and, and the food bank is able to fight, to provide food and some non-food items to those airmen, and we can support the base that way. So, and I will challenge you, the city of Yuba City donated $15,000 to the food bank, half of which was to be earmarked for Beale Air Force Base. And what we're doing is we're working on an airmen's market. So there is an old pizza place out on base that they're turning into the airmen's market. And it's, it's what you and I may call a food pantry, but they don't want to call it a food pantry because it's just kind of a resource place that is going to be managed by, by, what is that, Jackie? The first sergeants and the top, top three. And so when they identify a need, then they will take these airmen to this airmen's market where they can receive food, which will be provided by donations and by the food bank, as well as other non-food items that may help. So, and, and we were able to donate 300 turkeys to the, to the first sergeants as well. But what you see here is donation checks to make this airmen's market happen, and all of us on the committee here. So this is super exciting. You're going to hear more about this airmen's market, and there will be opportunities to support that. This is kind of the layout. They've got a logo. I mean, like, when the military wants to do something, they get it done. I mean, they get the logo, they got the schematics, it's just super cool. So we were able to provide a really nice new refrigerator, and we're looking at a potential of a new freezer and just, CMAC was able to provide shelving. And so we just want this infrastructure in place so that when the new leadership, you know, fly away, that, that, and when the current leadership flies away and the new, new leadership comes in, that, that we have established relationships with community members and community organizations so that we can serve our men and women that keep us safe every day. So it's super cool. Wanted to share that with you. So there are opportunities to help a few if the board so chooses. Hint, hint. And food recovery, so we, the food bank, we are the food, the premier food recovery organization for Yuba and Sutter Counties, and I just wanted to give you the food recovery stats. Year-to-date, 2025, 1.6 million pounds of food so far, and we're going to exceed that. We're going to exceed 2024 where we, we recovered 1.7 million pounds of food. So we're keeping the food out of the landfills. We are retrieving that from our local retailers. It's beautiful, beautiful viable food. It helps feed our community, and like I said, it keeps it out of the landfills, and we're super proud of that. And it's a big endeavor to pick up the grocery items from our grocery stores and local retailers because we can't throw it away either. And so we have to get it out, and we get it out quickly, and it's a well-oiled machine. Those of you who don't know, there's 11 employees that work at the food bank, and we rely on thousands and thousands of volunteers and over 50 partner agencies. So we are moving and shaking and getting that food out. And that is it. Thank you so much for hearing my presentation, and if, if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Maria, for that great presentation and for the amazing things that you do with the food bank. It's really impressive. So let me bring it back to the board for any comments? Yes?
Yes. You mentioned there was a, a family or somebody that came and cooked breakfast that morning?
Yes.
What was their name?
Tracy Ramos.
Okay.
And Alexandra Rainey.
I'd like to make a motion to present a proclamation to those two.
We, we can do that at the end of the, when, when it's your turn to speak later.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right, thank you.
Is that something that they could, how would, how would they know that you're doing that? Is that something that happens later, or?
So at, when, when we do our comments, then he can make that motion, the board will vote on it, and then it will happen at a later date.
Oh, very cool.
And then we'd let them know.
Okay.
We light them here and hopefully you back as well.
Awesome, I love that. That's great. Great, thank you.
And Supervisor Baines, did you have comments?
The market out at Beale, remember that I have that walk-in cooler in the freezer?
Oh, gosh. Inside joke.
No joke, it's still available.
It's huge, Carm.
Well, there you go. That's a big one, huh? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Through the Chair, great work, great job. I'm sure, like I said, we're going to do everything we can to help out. I'm, I'm hoping, I mean, you mentioned the Air Force Base, I'm assuming the water agency, since it's Yuba County out there, they, they, I see the great stuff that they do. So I think it's, I think you guys get better and better every year, literally, better and better. There's something always better that just keeps on adding up, and you hear good things. So that's, that's positive. And it's, it's, it's very tough and sad to see all those individuals lined up. It's, I mean, it's, it's tough economy, and it doesn't look like it's going to get any better anytime soon, so.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Stevens?
Maria, I'd just like to say thank you. Thank you to all your staff, and thank you to all your board members. The passion and the purpose that you have behind, behind you and, and every, all your volunteers is amazing. I've seen it work, and it's just an exceptional organization, and you're exceptional, too.
Aw, thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, we'll move on to the next appearance item, please.
Adoption of a resolution authorizing the Director of Development Services to write off 13 community development block grant loans in the amount of $234,968.74, with no impact to the general fund.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. So last time that I was before you, it was July of '25. So this afternoon, I'm joined by Riddell from my department, as well as Paul Ashby from the Adams Ashby Group. And so since we're in front of you in July, we've met with the County Administrator's Office, and we met with the Treasurer Tax Collector, and we did as much research as possible regarding the 13 loans that are referenced and mentioned in the staff report, and there's a resolution at the end of it. And then we also have a spreadsheet that kind of lists some pertinent information about the various properties. But essentially, what happened is that we met with the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, and through their resources and some guidance from Paul Ashby, we had title reports done on the 13 properties that are listed in the staff report to determine if the county recorded a deed of trust when they provided the loans. These loans date back to 1993, so 1993, 2003, 2007, 2009. And I think, as I maybe previously explained to you, these were home improvement loans that the county and the Regional Housing Authority at the time kind of partnered with, would process applications that property owners submitted for consideration. And then money was allocated through the form of a loan so that citizens could make those improvements. The terms of the loan were they are 30-year balloon payments with 2% to 3% annual interest rate, but there's no payments due for 30 years. And so in the staff report, we tried to group the respective loans that have similar conditions for your consideration. So for example, some are listed as being foreclosed, some are listed that the years, no, I'll say documents, no title reports, the deed of trust. There are some other loans that are more than 30 years old, which exceeds the term of the loan that was originally issued. And then there's, you know, one, for example, that went through a bankruptcy. So any claims on title would have been released in the form of judgment. There's another loan that has, you can scroll if you like. Once again, there was no deed of trust that was recorded. And then the final one, there's actually no real records, it just has been maintained in a, a listing of the relative loan. So we've listed the addresses of all of these properties. We verify that, you know, all these properties do exist within the county. Some of the properties- Some of the properties have changed ownership. So there's, and I think as I previously explained to you, the county was not notified when the ownership changed hands. So the reason why we're here is that in 2021, through an external audit, they, they discovered that of the loans that they reviewed, there was not substantial or sufficient information. So something to point out is that, as I mentioned, these loans existed since 1993, and it wasn't until 2021 that they were discovered in the external audit. And part of that is because in an external audit, they take a random sampling of, you know, various funds throughout the county. So in 2021, a portion of the CDVG program was audited, and then the findings were made. What happened subsequently, '22, '23, once again, there was a similar audit finding because no real changes had occurred with the records. And the state HCD, Housing and Community Development, then gave notice to the county that the county as a whole is no longer eligible for any HCD, state or federal grants. And so my department has worked diligently since that time to try to do the research. I think I've mentioned to you before, my department has sent out up to four letters, certified letters, to property owners at these residences, trying to receive and collect the required information that HCD stipulates in the loan documents. And these 13 properties, right, were not responding. We do have other properties of the 28 total loans that are fully in compliant. We receive their documents every year, and so they're in good standing, and we'll continue to process those. But this staff report includes a resolution with some very specific terminology, essentially to write off these loans. And all that may sound, you know, very significant and very severe. That is the actual language that state HCD would need the county to determine in order to release the county from the obligations of these loans so that then they would be released from a subsequent external audit. And then HCD would be able to determine that the county is once again eligible for state and federal grants through their agency. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Like I said, we have Paul Ashby, who's very experienced with helping other cities and counties with similar situations. So please, we'd like to answer any questions you might have because I realize it's a challenging situation with almost $235,000 in loans.
All right, thank you, Neil. Is there any public comment, first of all? No public comment? Okay, great. Then we'll bring it back to the board for questions. Ziegemeyer was first.
All right. For those of you watching or here for the third meeting, this is the third time we've talked about this, third meeting. Because we, as a board, asked, the first time we heard about it, we asked to extend it. And we asked to extend it again because we just wanted a more thorough, in-depth search on the records. Because when you look at this, I mean, this is, hey, this is taxpayers' money right here. This is it. And we've exhausted our search. We've looked high, we've looked low, we've talked with the title companies, we've talked everywhere. So almost 40 years ago, it just wasn't done the right way. But who knows how things were done 40 years ago? Handshake deals were a thing. And now here we are, holding us up from grants that we cannot receive because of this. Thankfully, the other 15, so, but we have these 13. 13 that we have to move on, we have to get past this. So I just want everyone to realize that. If you get any questions, we've heard the same speech. Like I said, all of us supervisors up here are very upset over this. We don't take this lightly. That's why it took us so long to go through all the paperwork and so forth and background checks. But just wanted to explain that portion of it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Stevens.
Neil, I'd just ask, are, on these 13 loans, are they all current on their property taxes?
No, there are, I believe, up to five that are not delinquent at various stages, one to about five years.
Can we take any action on receiving any of that back, or forcing foreclosure or something to receive funds back?
No, because there was not a deed of trust recorded. So the county has no legal authority over the property. The taxes themselves will be collected through the treasurer tax collectors.
Right.
Prostheses, but.
But if they're not paying the last five years or something else, what happens at that point?
I believe the treasurer tax collector has a means and a method to address those situations, but no monies through the CDVG programs can be allocated to the tax bill to be collected.
Okay.
To the Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I believe for those, as Mr. Hay mentioned, it would be separately dealt with through the treasurer tax collector's office if someone hasn't paid their taxes for five years. I think that's the threshold where the treasurer can then do power to sell and have a, an auction on the courthouse steps. And I think he'll be coming to the board soon, actually, to move forward with some of those auctions for past properties that are due. But we have a five-year due diligence period that we have to wait so that we're not accidentally auctioning homes off or properties off from people that there could have been some kind of mistake or something. So, but yeah, that, those will be dealt with through the treasurer's office.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Through the Chair.
And then you.
I'll keep it fast, just to be clear.
Keep it fast, because Supervisor.
Do, do, air on us, because we take responsibility on this one 40 years ago. I mean, none of us were here, but hey, it is, the air on the county. There is no legal way to go after this money. No legal way, no legal process. We cannot touch it. We can't go after their properties whatsoever. And that stinks because we're talking about $235,000. There is absolutely, we've exercised every legal option.
Thank you Supervisor Baines.
Thank you. I know that with the tax collector, if we're, like Steve was saying earlier, five years late, that they have a program they follow through with, notify, put your name in the newspaper, and, and that's not a real neat thing to have is your name in the newspaper saying you own taxes. With that being said, we've got these addresses on here. Are there names that go with this address, one? And the ones that didn't actually file, where we didn't go through escrow and file a loan against it, if you will, those are basically turned into personal loans. So my thought is, I, I am leaning towards writing this off, but I think that maybe we should put their name in the newspaper with associated address and let them know that they're in default. And maybe, maybe, maybe we get something to come up of it. But if not, let's move forward. That's just where I stand.
So just to clarify, so you're kind of recommending a process of collections? Is it beyond that stage, or is it, anything can be done? Maybe, Paul, you can answer some questions on what we're able to do in terms of that. Because that is a good question, because sometimes in the private world, you'll turn, you know, a note into a private note. And so can, I guess the question is, can the county turn into a note that can be collected upon, right? Is there something like that? Or, but that still wouldn't fix the CDVG?
No.
Prevent, you know, that'd still prevent us from applying, though, right?
Yeah, good afternoon, Chair, members of the, members of the board, Paul Ashby, Adams Ashby Group. Yeah, in this situation, I've never seen it turned into a personal loan before because you don't have any legal standing on it. There's also a number of these where, if you look at, just for example, the first two that were on the list, they've already been foreclosed on. So if you have a foreclosure or a bankruptcy, those have already gone through, probate, been sold. So the current person who's residing there would have nothing to do with this previous loan. I just wanted to make that clear, too.
One more thing is, okay, when they got the loan, they signed a piece of paper. They just didn't say, hey, here's your check. Somebody signed for something, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So if, whether the property was foreclosed on or not, there's still this outstanding loan. So if you went and borrowed $236,000 from me, and I said, sign right here saying I promised to pay it back, and I didn't record it against a property, you know, to hold it on the side, what's, that's what we're holding right now. It's a piece of paper saying they borrowed the money, right?
In some situations where we have that piece of paper, some of them we don't have any files on. Again, my understanding is that, once it's been foreclosed on, the first is going to made whole first, and you being the second, it would just fall off of the property at that point.
I understand that portion, but some of these where the, maybe the person passed away, and they're deceased, so they're, they're heirs to the family. I'm sure they've been notified. I'm not trying to hold up the process here because I definitely want the, the loans to come through. We definitely need the money so we can file for these grants. But I think that we need personally to put their name in the newspaper, at least to let the public know who these people are that failed, and then record it. Because why should we benefit these people and not the rest of the whole, the whole county of Sutter? Does that make sense?
Sure.
I mean, we're giving them a good credit rating that's going to show that they paid their loan. We wrote it off, and hunky-dory for everybody. But I just want to make sure that it's noted that these people hadn't paid. That's all I was leaning toward.
I would defer to the board on, on that decision. From an HCD or CDVG regulation standpoint, I can't give you.
Is it against the law to do that?
No. I shouldn't say against the law. I'll say, speak on CDVG terms, HCD, no.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Baines?
Yes, this has obviously come before board a few times, and it's unfortunate that we can't collect the $235,000 at this time, but obviously, it's holding up our eligibility to even apply for, you know, upwards of $900,000 worth of grant funds. So therefore, obviously, I'll be supporting staff's recommendation. But just have a question for staff, like, what process in place to, at this time, to prevent from this happening anytime in the future?
So I will say that, you know, your board here, as of recently, has actually processed a few CDVG projects. For example, the New Haven project with the Regional Housing Authority. And so there is a, a much better, much, much more thorough process between both the Development Services Department and the Housing Authority so that, and I can say, for example, the New Haven project on Garden Highway, that's one of the current projects, right? That, they are current on all their documents. We have regular correspondence with them and their agents. So there has been a policy and a procedure. Previously, in 2022, when these audit findings were brought up, and my department had meetings with HCD, we had to develop a CDVG loan administration program and provide that to HCD for their review and approval. And it essentially lists annual actions that had to be done on all the loans. Subsequently, that's what we've been doing, is that we've been generating these letters and sending them out to the property owners. And then it's only through, you know, further conversations with gentlemen such as Paul Ashby, and through the treasurer tax collector, that we've tried to vet out every resource, you know, going through the clerk recorders office for all documents that are available on all of the title.
To the Chair?
Hold on one moment. Supervisor Baines, Boone, Supervisor Stevens is first, and then right after you.
I think Supervisor Baines is kind of, I was wanting to know how much was possible we were getting in grants, and I heard $900,000. And so I wanted the public to hear that number of, you know, this is the funds we're talking about, how much we can possibly get by clearing this off our books. So I just needed, I needed the public to hear that. Is that, is that figure right, Sarah?
Higher than that.
It's higher than that?
More, that's just minimum.
I can speak on that a little bit, Chairman and Board. So most recently, the NOFA that we're looking at, Notice of Funding Availability for CDVG, you can go up to 3.6 million is actually the maximum. We've seen that number come up drastically over the last few years, which, you know, not to get too much in the weeds, but 3.3 million of that can go towards infrastructure and facility construction projects.
Okay, and how, how quickly can, by clearing this up, how quickly can it proceed? Is it, is it like you have to be good for a couple of years, or is it right away?
Part of the threshold items that you have to apply for with CDVG is that you have to have a single audit that does not have any findings that is precluding you from applying. So it would be how quickly you can get this in front of your auditors to get this item resolved and sent into HCD.
So it could be pretty, pretty fast, right?
I would assume it could be pretty fast.
Okay, and Supervisor Boone first, and then Supervisor Baines.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, I don't know if everybody's aware what CBG stands for, maybe, or development, CBDG stands for. If you could explain to everybody what that means?
Sure.
So they don't, so they know the acronym?
Sure.
First question?
Sure, well, CDVG stands for Community Development Block Grant.
Okay. Secondly, I, I would like to make a motion that any new loans that come through the CBDG program run through escrow and use their property as collateral. And that way, it's recorded, so we have something to fall back on as opposed to just signing a piece of paper and throwing it in the court. I don't want to see that.
Point of order on the motion. I don't think we can do that motion. It's not on the agenda, right, for that motion at this point?
That's correct. If it's related to this issue itself, it could be addressed, but that appears to go beyond.
Okay, that, so that would be a separate issue that could come back to a later date. And with that, Supervisor Baines, for your comments.
I'd just like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Boone, and I'll call for roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you for your work on this. Appreciate it, and hopefully we never have to see that again.
Big thanks, guys. We really appreciate your time and effort.
Be Well, Sutter County, 2024-25 Program Update.
Hello, Veronica.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairman, Members of the Board, Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director, but also a member of the Be Well Committee. So I have some committee members. Not everyone's standing, but can my committee members raise their hand? I know I have one more out there. And we also have what we call Be Well Captains in the audience. So any Be Well Captains can raise their hand? Okay, we got some support here. So I know some of you are familiar with our Be Well program and possibly our new supervisors not as much. So this will be an easy, fun presentation, real quick. So nothing, no decisions have to be made. This is just a recap of our program year 24-25. Okay, so a little bit about the Be Well program, just quickly. This is a program that was created a few years ago by employees. Previously, we had a employee wellness clinic, and when that closed down, we were trying to think of something else that we can still use to promote wellness amongst employees. So this program was homegrown here at Sutter County. And, and actually, as a side note, it's often looked to, and I've done a number of lunch and learns with other local agencies and private sector because the program's just really robust and, and well put together, if I don't say so myself. So a few of the things that we do, obviously, in promoting employee engagement. Prior to this, we did have an activities committee in years past where we would do the employee picnic and like the Halloween. Dress up, you know, kind of fun at work is what we call it. But really, this goes above and beyond this. And, and it, what we focus on is a bunch of different areas of wellness. So physical wellness, mental wellness, financial, occupational, and social. So these are what we call our pillars of the program. And everything we do kind of ties back to these five areas, five focus areas of wellness. So again, this is last year's. My current team or the current captains wouldn't be on here because this was last fiscal year. We started a new team and new captains and such in July. But here's some pictures of our old teams. So again, we have five committee members that meet monthly and kind of plan out what we're doing. We have 17 wellness captains. These are most of you that are, you know, here from different departments. You should know who your wellness captain is. And those are kind of the boots-on-the-ground employees that we meet with quarterly. And they're the ones out there, you know, actually helping spread the word, helping get people involved. They're the movers and the shakers, we like to say, in the departments that are really keeping that positive vibe going in departments as well as getting them engaged with things we have going on. So this year, we had, or this past fiscal year, 31 wellness clubs created. So wellness clubs are ongoing, and they can be created by any member. They don't have to be captains, they don't have to be any of us on the committee, you don't have to be a department head, you don't have to be in management. It's, any employee can create a wellness club. So we have, you know, game clubs, we have the garden club you can see there. We have walking clubs, there's healthy eating clubs, there's squat challenge clubs that do so many squats a month. And, and they're kind of just, it's just for fun, right? To keep yourself accountable with other coworkers and make it fun. We also were able to host 38 group activities. So group activities are things that are centered around physical movement typically, or actually doing an act. or actually doing an activity. And these are one-time events that are set up. So some of these are set up by the committee ourselves. So you can see the plant class here was set up with the master gardeners. And then here's an axe throwing somebody went to with some of their coworkers. So they set that up. Again, I mean, and these aren't things, people are doing this on their own time, on their own, you know, dime, a lot of these things outside of work, of course. We've had a Lotteria night, the painting class up there. Donna's not here, but she's hosted a few paint and hot chocolate, not paint and sip, you know, no alcohol, but paint and hot chocolate type classes. We've done the puzzle competitions at the library. And those are fun. You'll see, you know, a lot of people bring their kids and stuff to that. So that's always fun. And again, I mean, it's things we're already, you know, kind of doing in the community or that example that the library's doing, but we market it to employees and get people together outside of work with their families. So here's some more pictures. We've done pie classes, the annual wreath class with the master gardeners. We had a zumba class up there, sourdough bread making, a cultural celebration that Public Health held. They had all different types of food and such. Okay, so getting to our engagements, this is the other piece of the program, so activities, engagements. Engagements are more centered around education and training. So a lot of this is pushed out, you know, from HR. These look real busy up there, but we had 41 engagements that we sent out to staff. And a thing I want to point out about, you know, the program that I didn't state earlier is this is all voluntary. So what we really like about this program compared to, oh, here's a gym membership or here's, you know, money for that, is this program is on purpose, not one size fits all. Everyone has different, you know, goals and different, you might have financial goals. You might have, you might be super fit and want to go to the gym and do all these kinds of things. But other people want to grow, you know, in their careers. They want to grow socially. They want to be better parents. They want to be better, you know, at a whole variety of things. You guys can feel free to join in at any point also. I don't think they wanted to talk, but hope not because I took the whole thing over. But we also were able to sponsor 35 individuals or 35 slots for some of our local fun runs. So Pink October is obviously, you know, the Give a Key Foundation, Give a Key Caring for Women Foundation. This past year, we did the Spooktacular River Run, which is supporting both United Way and Family Soup. And the Have a Heart for Kids, which is Yuba City Education Foundation. So those were some from last year. Employees really seem to enjoy that. And also on top of that, we have volunteer hours that can be done at these events. So you may not take one of the sponsorships where we, you know, take the Be Well dollars and pay $10 for you to be in the run, but you could actually go and volunteer. I know I'm looking over here because I know Haley's done a bunch, but actually volunteering on these runs, right? To be on the corners and directing people or helping people get signed in. So that's another way that Be Well gives back or our county employees give back. These are obviously always really popular, our countywide challenges. So I just want to give a little stats on, or some stats on these. And this is where we get the most of our participation, I would say. People like competition, guys. So our Climb Every Mountain Challenge is a distance challenge. And here, employees walked with a partner from any department. They didn't have to be in your department and, or sorry, they worked with a partner. And they were to climb seven different mountains, several different distances. And with this one, it's not just a walking challenge. They could be biking, running, kayaking, a number of things. So that one's real fun. And 96 employees participated in that. Our Sutter Steps Into Wellness, a walking challenge essentially, we had 301 employees participated and they walked 51.6 million steps, which is approximately 25,000 miles in the month. So that was, this one just gets better and better. Last year, we tried something new. We always try to throw in a different one and it was a reading challenge. And 106 employees participated and read a combined 4,053 hours. So that's really exciting. I'd like to break down just some of the activities, challenges, and engagements that we do and that we try to, you know, keep these going throughout the year. June's a little lower. That's when the program year is coming to an end. Everyone's turning in their incentive forms. So here's our wellness extras. So these are not things that are going to go towards that incentive that employees put in for participating at the end of the year. These are just wellness extras. They're fun things that you get to do with your coworkers. So you'll see here, our employee picnic last year. We had door decorating contests. We had a library card art contest where if any of you that are Sutter County employees, when you go to the Sutter County Library, please specifically ask and you'll get your own Sutter County employee card that looks like that, beautiful. We have our annual health and wellness fair. We obviously, we offer the COM app, which is a mental health app for employees and it has a lot more to it for all staff. And then we obviously do a lot of projects with Blue Zones. And then this year, we were able to sponsor a night of baseball at the New High Wheelers. So that was exciting, too, to get these community partnerships. Here's some fun last year from Halloween. We had a scarecrow decorating contest. We again partner with Master Gardeners. We do a blood drive twice a year and do some social media fun things as well. Okay, so what in the future? Always more. So I just put a bunch of things up there, but I really think the biggest thing is, you know, seeing more partnerships, more camaraderie that we've, I would say that's the biggest thing we've gained from this program is really the relationships that are built. And when we, you know, we survey staff at the beginning of each year, and I'll get to some of those stats in a second, but when we survey staff, always the biggest thing is that they got to get outside of work and actually meet coworkers or they got to make a friend when they didn't have a friend if they were new here. And broke down, it really, I guess, helped break down the barriers and try new things as well that they wouldn't have maybe normally tried if they didn't have this program and our captains and kind of our encouragement, right, coming out from the county to do these engaging, fun, you know, good for your mental health, good for your physical health activities. Here's some employee testimonials. You guys have all this, so I won't read all of them, but one of them, one of my favorite things about the Be Well program is the diversity of the activities and engagements that keep me motivated. I appreciate how the Be Well program and the Be Well team helped me stay accountable of my health by tracking challenges. My overall health and wellness has improved. That's Lorena. So some of our performance measures, and this we report back to you annually on with this presentation. We had 696 employees complete our survey. We had 382 employees complete at least four engagements, 376 complete four activities. So these again are people that are participating and turning in that incentive. I already told you some of the group activities and wellness clubs that were created. Is anyone better off, right? If we're doing this, is anyone better off? So of the employees surveyed, we actually went up 4% for those who participated saying that the program has value to them and they hope they, you know, see it continues. People, 68% reported improved work-life balance. I will say these 10 chronic conditions, this is what we get from our insurance, you know, companies. We saw three more areas drop this year from the previous year. So this year, cancer, chronic pain, and hypertension went down. The prior year, we had a decrease in cancer, hypertension, and hyperlipidemia? Yeah, okay. So here's some of our stats there. So we're always trying to, you know, we have a lot of programs already built in to, you know, benefits that HR obviously puts out that try to, I guess, mitigate or try to address some of these areas. But I think, you know, depression and how much that, I mean, obviously hypertension goes with that, obesity, all of these things that we hope, you know, hope we're teaching people good habits and can make it fun while we're doing it. Do you guys have anything? All right, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I just want to end with thank you truly for your support of this program. I know employees, like I said, they value the program and have fun while doing it. And I want to thank department heads and management that also, you know, supports this program and some of the shenanigans that go on outside of work or that you hear about or, you know, fun things that people get to do. And thank you for participating as well.
Great, thank you for that presentation. What an amazing program, really. I remember when you started it and all the energy and you still have the energy going and the staff and you guys have been putting a great job behind it and doing a lot of great efforts behind it. So congratulations on keeping that going and we look forward to continue supporting it. I do want to add a couple of other statistics though, because we have Supervisor Ziegemeyer, he ran like 4.5 miles today. So, you know, we should add that to the figures somewhere and then--
He did that walking challenge.
Yeah, and then--
It's 809 days straight of a mile.
Straight of running, yes. So pretty amazing. And then I want to add for Supervisor Stevens and I, we climbed a mountain peak up in the CRS, so we did get there. And then we walked 30,000 steps recently one day on a trip.
These all count.
Yeah, we want to make sure we add that, get some credit. No, you guys are doing a great job in all seriousness. So I want to bring it back to the board for any comments. Supervisor Stevens?
Veronica, I've got a very serious complaint about this whole program. So I was offered to be the judge of the Halloween jack-o'-lantern contest. And I was really excited about it and I think we got one entry or something like that. That's hard to judge.
That was hard. So we have a tree contest coming up, so I may be calling you.
Okay.
Department trees, okay?
I would have been one of those--
Oh, yeah. Her staff won the pumpkin, she was saying.
Okay, I would have been one of those--
The one pumpkin--
--people because I didn't get to--
I know.
Yeah, okay, thank you. You do a great job, Veronica. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I guess Supervisor Boone.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Half of the steps that Mike have belong to me.
No way.
He's taking credit for it. Okay, Supervisor Baines, any comments? Okay, let's give them a round of applause for an awesome job there. Okay, we have no other comments and then we're going to go to follow-up announcements from CAO Steve Smith.
Thank you Chair and Supervisors, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. The, a couple of recent things. One, I wanted to comment on the CDBG, just some follow-up. The state is leaning more towards encouraging jurisdictions to use CDBG for grants, meaning like the jurisdiction uses it, finds an area that meets the income requirements and maybe makes more mass impact changes like for infrastructure or streets, drainage than individual loans. Because even in the best of times, even if we make sure that we have everything legally done, filing a deed of trust and all of that, if a home defaults, the first, of course, gets paid and this is always going to subordinate. So there's always the chance there that even with every legal process followed that it gets dropped off. So just wanted to mention that and we'll come back to the board and we'll also, Mr. Hay and I were speaking, we'll have an annual report on the remaining 15 loans to keep the board up to speed on that. Recently, last week, and maybe some of you will mention this as well, but there was the California State Association's Association of Counties Conference in San Jose. And one of the really cool things was our bi-county health officer, Dr. Lou, won the Circle of Service Award for, yeah. It says strengthen the statewide partnership among counties and state agencies and leadership in implementing California advancing and innovating Medi-Cal justice-involved initiative. But one thing Dr. Lou had mentioned to me that she really regrets is that she didn't get to give a speech in San Jose. And I didn't know if we had 30 seconds.
Absolutely, we'd like to have her give a speech now.
Yes.
Dr. Lou?
Good afternoon, Chair and Member of the Board of Supervisors. And I want to say that I accepted it humbly as an individual, but I could not have done any of county justice involved without team effort, Team Sutter County. So that from the CAO's office to the sheriff and his department, the chief probation officer, Sarah Barhart Rios as our fearless HHS director, and all of the branches within HHS, Sutter County Behavioral Health, E&amp;E, Eligibility and Employment, Public Health, even our Children and Adult Services. And we should not forget our wealth partners in the jail and our FQHT partners, especially Ampla Health as our in-reach provider. So it's just me on that award, but it's really the collective effort of Team Sutter County.
This is a really big deal, so let's give her a big round of applause, Be Wood. I mean, think about 58 counties and Little Sutter County wins this big award. So amazing, great job.
So thank you, Dr. Lou. I know she had really wanted to speak, so also thank the board for being so supportive of this program. I know we were one of the first counties to implement. I think Yuba was among the first four or six and then we were in the second, first three, wow. And then we were in the second phase, so. Also, some of the supervisors got to make it out to the Merriman Village Groundbreaking Today, which is a Habitat for Humanity in Yuba City project where the initial phase will create 79 units, housing units for, primarily for elderly residents and retired veterans. And it's being built locally by Hilbers, so it's nice to see some projects that are being supported here in the local community and benefiting the local community and built by the local community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, CAO Smith. And then we'll bring it back to the board for district reports. Start with Supervisor Baines.
Yeah, I just actually want to thank Sheriff, I'm sorry, under Sheriff Smallwood for the Christmas card that was up here. You have a beautiful family, have so much to be thankful and grateful for, but I just want to wish you and your family Merry Christmas as well as to everyone that's here if we don't see you next week. You know, enjoy the holidays, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Then on a not-so-good note, I'd like to make a couple of requests for some letters of sympathy and condolences to go to the families of Sutender Nath Davit for his passing. Also a letter to Sonny and Bobby Samra for the passing of Bobby's mother. A letter to Ranjit Naman Kondola for the passing of their son. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Baines. Supervisor Boone?
Yes, thank you. Would now be a good time to ask about including on our CBD grants, if we could make sure when they come in to get that grant, if we could file an escrow or, you know, where we could take a lien against or have their property as collateral against that loan. So next time, or if there is a next time we get in that position, at least we'll have a leg to stand on, or is that something that we'll do?
I think this would be a good time for you to request that staff research that.
Okay, let's do that. Let's request the staff to investigate.
Perfect.
At this point in time regarding a CBD grant so that we can file a lien against their property should they do so and come following through with the CBD grant.
Perfect.
Also, I'd like to, I'd like to, I mean, I was really moved today with the food bank out at our Kmart shopping center. And I'd like to get a proclamation out with Maria there for the food bank and then the crew that made breakfast that day in an impromptu movement. And I think that's really neat that our community jumps in without being told or being asked or just all of a sudden just does it. And I really think that needs to be recognized. So if we could find out who those two people were, especially in the breakfast crew, I'd like to make sure that they were recognized from our board, in fact, up in front with all of you here today. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Boone. Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
We'll start out with thanking Supervisor Stevens and Saylove for coming out to Meridian. People are all very grateful. You guys did an amazing job out there. I mean, day and night difference, big deal. They're very, still getting phone calls. So I was able to attend the Young Farmers and Ranchers program down in Anaheim and a little bit of the Farm Bureau, very awesome conventions, great to see farmers from here head down there. So I'd like to do a plaque in appreciation for all that they do for each group from the Yuba Center Farm Bureau and also one for the Young Farm Bureau. Was actually awarded the 2025 Innovator-- Was actually awarded the 2025 Innovator, Innovator Award, voted on by all those who attended, and were awarded the Class B County of the Year Award winner. So the Class B County of the Year Award winner. So that's awesome. Let's look into the details on that so we can put it on there, on the plaque. Let's see here, I want to put on the program that we meet in, in January at Sutter High School. We've always got, already got the approval of Sutter High School for that meeting in January. So for those of you who aren't watching the news, Sutter High School plays for the state championship on Friday. They are going to leave Sutter at, on Thursday at 8:00 a.m. So the route's, it's on, posted on social media, it's going to go down Acacia, left on Sutter, right on California Street, so they can drive by the grammar school, Britton School, so the kids can all wish them luck and so forth. We'll be meeting as a group there at the high school, wishing them farewell. You got a good shot. They got a really, really good shot. Supervisor Flores, his nephew plays on the team. It's, this is a great shot. This is our first time making it to the state championship out of eight tries. Eight tries, eight times the charm. So with that being said, we had talked about, we'd voted on a parade earlier last month, and we've been holding off, holding off, hoping for this. So we want to include them in the parade. And I'd like to have plaques now for the Junior Huskies 8U, 10U program, the Sutter High Trap Team, and the Sutter High Football Team. And we'll present those on the evening of the parade. Hopefully, we'll do this parade next week. Sponsorship of the parade, plus I'd like to vote on doing a sponsorship for the parade for the Sutter, our annual Sutter Light Parade, which invite everyone out, which is down Acacia Avenue. Very cool little parade. Let's see here. So come out this Thursday, 8:00 a.m., line the streets. Be there about 7:50. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Zigamire. Supervisor Stevens?
So we're getting very close to Christmas, and I'm feeling very optimistic right now. And I was just thinking the other day that Sutter County has really accomplished a lot this last year. And I'm not talking about Sutter County Board or just Sutter County in general. And I just, I made a list of some of the things that we accomplished and other agencies have accomplished. And sometimes we don't realize what all we get done because it's in between. It takes a long time to, to get there. But we've actually accomplished a lot this year. And I've got a list here, so I'm going to read them off. And most of you probably know the ones I'm talking about. But the culverts on Bogue and Schlags got fixed, which it had been left for a long time. It got fixed. Mark Hawkins Bridge, we just went to a ribbon cutting on it. It got done. Major project. Speed limit signs up and down George Washington Boulevard, which we'd been working on for some time. The huge culvert that had been, a reclamation road had been closed, and now it's open. Huge project. It had been closed for a couple years. So the West Natomas Road down in South Sutter County had been closed for a long time. We were able to get that open. Many of you have been down Highway 99, Oswald Road there. The traffic light got installed. You know, this has all been going on within a year. We don't realize a lot of times how much there is being done. Steve mentioned the village, in Merrimott Village. Huge project for the city of Yuba City. We have a brand-new public information officer that has let a lot of this be known, that before it didn't get out. But now this kind of information is getting out. So, so I'm very optimistic this Christmas season that even 2026 is going to be a better year. So thank you.
Okay, on that note, I'm going to adjourn the meeting because that optimism, I want to leave it there. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take the optimism with me as well. Thank you Supervisor Stevens for your comments. First, we're going to take a call for a motion.
Sorry Supervisor, I totally forgot. Tomorrow through the chair, I'm going to be attending the Sutter Cemetery District Meeting tomorrow for Sutter Cemetery. I'll be getting paperwork. I guess there's some discrepancy over $10,000 deposit that they put in with the county. And either way, I want to receive that paperwork, and I'll bring it back to the board so we can put it on the agenda for next meeting, so we can discuss it. And they'll bring, I'll make sure to ask for Representative to come from the Cemetery District to help explain it to us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you're going to be attending Reeves Across America, too, right on Saturday? Did you want to mention that?
Yes, yes. Reeves Across America. I mean, please come out. And come out Friday to help Mark Graves. There's all the help to better. Tom Walter puts this whole thing together. He's absolutely amazing. Tom's a rock star. He is literally a rock star. And he runs circles around everyone, and the guy is just phenomenal. Him and Robin both.
But that's, you know, I'd like to go ahead and add that we add a recognition for Tom Walter to the.
Yeah, and.
Do that, and Robin.
And, yeah, and let's, you know what? Let's, I want a fresh plaque for them as well.
Yes.
Seriously, these guys, they're just incredible, just an incredible.
Every year, year after year, so.
Yeah, and it's, he brought it, and he founded it, and he started, but yes.
You want to make a motion?
See there Saturday at the Sutter Cemetery, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Zigamire. Second by Supervisor Sir Baines, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Have a great day. Meeting adjourned.